And so we could be on the MSBA board meeting agenda at their meeting on February thirteenth, February, correct, February thirteenth. Keith has been in contact with them and so Keith and I will be attending that and I think it would be great if Charlie or somebody else from the school committee, maybe Mayor, the school building committee chair, could go to that meeting as well. I think it's similar to when you are voted into eligibility where they then give the district an opportunity to stand up and say a few words, keep on representing well. Oh, I'm getting a note here just to remind people that we are being filmed by Westwood Studios. Is there anyone else who is? Okay, very good, thank you. So we're on track with our timeline to be voted into the feasibility study. I don't know if there's anything else we need to talk about at this point.
If you just outline the steps you're going to take after this.
Yeah, so once we get voted into feasibility, the school building committee then begins to meet. The first two tasks of the feasibility study are to hire the OPM, the owner's project manager, that's a function of the school building committee, and then also to go through the designer selection process, who is an architect. That is a process that's led by the MSBA, so they have a designer selection committee and we will be part of that, but they kind of drive the bus through that process. Our understanding is that those two tasks will take four to six months to complete. Once we've completed those, then we're really kind of getting into the feasibility study in earnest to where we start to look at different possible project options. So simultaneously with this, what we need to think about is, you know, the feasibility study is the opportunity for us to really engage with the community, to start to talk to residents about their expectations, what they would like to see. Because the other big task of the feasibility study is that the school committee is charged with creating something that's called the education model plan. That's really where the school committee sets out, sort of the vision for the future, what we want education to look like in Westwood, how that's related to facility. And it ultimately is that document that the school building committee uses as the criteria to come up with what they call the preferred design. That's really know for sure what the project is going to look like.
I'm always scared to look back to that.
Yeah, yeah, so the timing process is a little awkward with the summer vacation. So the, you know, hiring the OPM and the designer need to happen first. What MSBA has communicated to us is it's important to have those folks involved in this process, the community engagement, listening, gathering input, because they need to be able to use that thinking also as part of their design work. So, you know, summer is not a good time to engage anybody, to engage the community enough of anything, people are kind of off. So I think we will need to do some significant communication with people about what the plan is, what the timeline is, maybe even get some dates out there before people go away for the summer so that we can really hit the ground running when we start in September. So we won't want to be wasting any time, I think, at that point.
So it'd be valuable for us to think creative ways to public meetings or the various ways we've been putting by writing and stuff. The school committee will be on the committee, Mayor's the chairperson, and we've got already a lot of good people volunteered to be on, so we're ready to get moving on that. So creative ideas of how do we get input would be, what's our thinking about?
It'll be important to have somebody to help us who has gone through this process.
Right.
So looking at RFP for the OPM, is that something, who's going to put that together?
So we, Keith and I will work with Michelle Miller Peckett, she's the procurement officer at the town, and so we will work with her to.
And the MSBA will do our control part, they will do that, I guess.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, and then just a quick security audit update, you know, we're engaged in this process and so our consultants are wrapping up their visits to schools this week. They also have scheduled meetings with the police chief and the fire chief to talk with them as it pertains to school security. So that work is happening and then I will be meeting with them in early February. We have a meeting partly to talk about something at the district level, but also for me to get an update about sort of where we are, initial thinking, if they can give me a sense of what they're finding out at that point. Hopefully that'll be wrapping up.
Anything coming out of that that's?
Well, I mean, the principals have been meeting with them, a couple of things have come up in those interviews, but I have to say we don't have really a sense of any major things that they're thinking about yet, so that's partly why I want to sit down with them and say, can you give me some hints about where we're going? They've made a couple of comments about some things with locks on doors and whatnot, but nothing that seems terribly significant yet.
So can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So I think we owe a communication to the Finance Commission at least. It did come up the last FinCom meeting, Howard Messing mentioned he expected a December deliverable, I think we committed that to community. So I think I'd be interested in what the timing really is on the recommendations, because there are people who remember the December timeline.
Yeah, and as it turned out in the RFP process, for whatever reason, the bid wasn't actually awarded until the end of September, so we did get a little behind there. But yes, we're behind where we are in September. And I'm happy to have this in come.
Probably this September, yeah, whoever.
Yep, yep, and I think that, you know, we've been talking with the, I go to an executive function group at Town Hall, so I've been talking with those folks and they're aware of where we are. Even in the budget process, you know, one of the reasons we were trying to get the timeline that we wanted was so that if we had some sense of the scope of the recommendations, we could consider it in the budget process. You know, we've been talking with Pam Dukeman, with Mike Gillette about the fact that we think the supplemental FY nineteen article this spring, probably we're going to need to think about getting some funding to start implementing recommendations. So in other words, so that we don't have to wait until next year, if that makes sense. So we've, we're thinking about that.
Great. Are the students going to hold or not as far as getting feedback?
I don't know that students have been involved yet, they haven't been out to the high school yet, so.
Friday.
Friday, so perhaps they're going to be involved there, and they haven't been in the middle school yet, correct?
After they visit the high school.
Okay, so they've done all the elementary schools and I don't know if the elementary students have been involved in that process.
I'm sure they have.
Have they watched enough TV?
Right.
It's valuable, I think they ask for student input, ideas or suggestions and concerns they have, as far as valuable to them. Thank you. Any other questions?
Great, we'll turn it over to Keith, the two financials.
So considering the fact that I'm sure that we may want to do two financials, what is the question? As far as, I can see we're on track for, you know, historic, historical information where regularly should, you're actually going to head, get a little timing of certain things.
Questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I did just want to mention, I think you're aware that the town is engaged in this comprehensive plan process, I mean, Charlie is on that? No, okay, so Charlie is on that committee and the two members of that committee who are looking at town facilities did reach out to me, it's Tom Beadie and Phil Armando, and we had an initial conversation and they would like to come and just speak briefly with the school committee at the February meeting, if that's all right, and.
Very much.
I think they, I think actually what they want to do is ask you if there's anything you want to communicate to them.
Would that be our call from meeting?
It would, yeah. I don't think it'll be lengthy. So what's interesting, of course, they're looking at facilities, so they're interested in what they're thinking about in terms of buildings, and we've been talking a lot about that, so I don't think there's a tremendous amount of new information to.
This plan is updating the year two thousand plan, so it's, and it's like eight chapters being written and all the different committees in the town are being interviewed. I'm working on the open spaces integration, which is going to be an eight-page document taken from the eight hundred and fifty-page earlier document that was just down about a month ago, so it's not fair. But anyway, if anyone's interested in getting into these things, it would be well worth, it would be well worth checking it out because it's, excuse me. Anyway, if anyone's interested in the town plan, everything from facilities to economics and economic development, it's now being developed with seeking input from everybody in the town on these different signals. But it's supposedly the guiding document for all the town committees in using approvals of things and zoning and all this, and it's hopefully going to be coming to a head probably this spring.
Is it there in two thousand, does it think about?
We have, well, we have that, we have that committee, I mean, what do you call the first two tenures, I don't know, the two thousand something?
Yes.
I think they weren't, they didn't get enough people really to get these things, so it's a resurrected, which is going to be decent.
Yeah.
It's also the state requirement to get certain kind of state money, be eligible, you've got to have.
Have we told them?
By then.
Okay, Charlie, ethics disclosure, are you going to say?
Right, we had a meeting on an issue where the superintendent wanted to bring to our attention, she'll be involved in negotiating with the teachers coming up, and she wanted us to know that she had two family members who were teachers, didn't want a conflict of interest, be found out later, so she asked the school committee to consider it, and we voted to ask the superintendent to continue on with it, thanking her for bringing to our attention this issue.
So you did say vote?
We already did.
Oh, you did, and.
But thank you for, you wanted to bring that to our attention.
Yeah, so I, and my written ethics disclosure as required by law and your written acceptance is on file here, that's in the minister. And then just a couple of other things I wanted to mention, so we received some sad news this week that Leo Crow passed away, and I also know Leo Crow, he was a long-time administrator in the Westwood Public Schools, an assistant superintendent for a long time, and so I just want to acknowledge that and of course extend our condolences to his family. And, you know, I think when somebody is part of an institution for a long time, they leave their mark and I am quite certain that the success of the district is building on the foundation that he created. So I just want to acknowledge that. And then up on the screen here, I have our middle school Model UN team. This is a group that's new this year, you talked a lot about the high school Model UN here, but we have a new social studies teacher at the middle school, Mr. Akers, who has started a middle school chapter, and these are the delegates from Thurston who took part in the seventh annual Model UN climate change conference that was at Catholic Memorial High School recently. And we are proud to announce that Sonali Gopal, Olivia Homeler, and Jess Wang won outstanding delegate awards for their opening statements and negotiating skills already, experiencing some success there. Yeah, and finally, I just wanted to mention that last week, the school department has collaborated with the town, the town DPW, and we have applied for a Safe Words to School grant related to Martha Jones Schools. It's a federal grant program that's run actually through the state, through the Department of Transportation, thank you to Mrs. Tobin. We found out about this grant opportunity late, they released the grant application just before the holiday of December, and it was due this past Friday, and so we kind of hopped on and scrambled around for a couple of days last week, and if we were to get the grant, it would allow the town to do some improvements on sidewalks and crosswalks, get some flashing kind of school zone pedestrian beacons around the Martha Jones, and it's about a million dollars. So it's, we thought it was worth scrambling around for twelve hours to see if we can make that happen. No, we just thought we'd go for it.
When'd you find out?
So Todd Fortune, who's the DPW director, found this out, I think through a consultant who's working with the town around sidewalks and.
When'd you find out?
Oh, when do we find out? Oh, you know, I asked Todd and we're not sure when we're going to find out. It does seem that because it got released at a time that a lot of people weren't paying attention, we've gotten a little intel that our, so who knows?
There's no way you see the process of them.
I think it's processed at the state level, so it's federal funding that's run through a state agency, so hopefully we'll get some good news, fingers crossed then. And that is it.
Also, another town figure, Tom McCusco, who's been our town lawyer for many years, is retiring, and this Thursday night they have a little reception for him, and he's down in our logic school department, so we give him a little thank you at the retirement program. Yeah, I mean, now turn to our section on public participation, where we welcome people to come forward and offer their thoughts, maybe a couple of minutes, and we don't have all the answers, but we love to have people that have anything to tell us. Is there anybody here tonight who'd like to speak in the public participation program? No?
Anyone?
Any news from France or?
Los Angeles.
Also, I'd like to maybe introduce them a little bit, maybe is there any input from the student, not our committee, yeah, I'd like to be very patient and kind of listen to us, but I think that you'd like to bring to our attention or point out.
Not off the top of my head that I can think of, but I think we're asking.
Maybe in the future, but feel free to participate, let us know things that would be helpful for us to know. Next item, discussion item, superintendent will talk about our budget.
Great, all right. Well, I'm pleased to present to you our proposed FY twenty operating budget this evening, and I know you've had an opportunity to review some written materials, and I thought I'd do sort of walk through some of the highlights here and then we can get into the nitty gritty and the whole team here is available to answer questions. So the FY twenty budget is developed by the district leadership team, it's a group we call the Administrative Council, so it's central office plus all of the principals and assistant principals. We obviously get lots of input from our cost center leaders and of course from the school committee, we've talked in the last couple of months about what some of the school committee priorities are. Just to give people a sense of the things that we think about as we're developing the budget, we kind of have to think about three big buckets of things, and the first has to do with meeting our contractual salary obligations and looking at fixed costs, and really thinking about, you know, what would it take to open the doors next year with the same level of service to students that we have this year. So we take a look at the cost associated with those things. And then, of course, we're also interested in looking at enrollment and really maintaining reasonable cost sizes. Really, we spend a lot of time thinking about that here, and so I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about how shifting enrollment is impacting some of that decision-making. But thirdly, and I really want to make sure we're clear about this, that we're always thinking about how to continue to make progress on the objectives in our strategy for district improvement. So we don't just sort of want to say, how do we keep doing what we're doing, we want to think about how to move the district forward. And, you know, this year in particular, we talked a lot as a group about the fact that we were mindful of the fact that we're thinking about this elementary building project, that in fairly short order, we'll be asking the voters to support something that has a significant cost associated with that. And so we want to be clear that we're making sort of responsible decisions now, thinking about that future need, but at the same time, we have kids in front of us today and we need to make sure that we're doing right by those students and we don't want to in any way shortchange them because we're thinking about some future needs. So we keep that, keep all of those issues in mind. Throughout the fall, we of course have been working with the town through the budget steering process, Charlie, Heath and I have been meeting neatly, meeting monthly with those folks, and also through long-range financial planning, so hopefully we're all kind of hitting our marks together here. So the budget that we're proposing this evening, I think, does amply provide for the district needs, we feel good about the budget, and at the same time, it does leave some wishes unfunded, we are a school district, there's never going to be a day that we can't think of something else that would be fantastic for education, education. So I'll sort of start with the bottom line. So you can see here that we are proposing a three point four seven percent increase over FY nineteen, and that's a little over a million and a half dollars. Sort of big picture highlights, this represents no cuts to programs or services. We are thinking about funding for contractual salary increases and notably, our teachers' contract does expire this year, and so we'll be starting bargaining next week, and so that is something that unknown. You'll see that we're proposing reality in several positions among levels in the district just to reflect shifting enrollment. And of course, we are in year two of a plan to eliminate the full-day kindergarten tuition fee, that's something we committed to last year, but that means that there is, you know, a liability that we've got to take care of here, so. So I thought I'd just put this into context, three point four seven percent. So, you know, three point four seven percent is a relatively moderate increase, it's right in line with where we've been the last couple of years as we've been talking about things with the town. We kind of talk about three-ish being what the town can currently afford to sustain within two and a half. And I do just want to point out that we had a couple of more robust increases in FY sixteen, FY seventeen, and that's when University Station was coming online, and so there was a lot of new growth. Revenue then, and so we had a couple of big increases in a row, which are still benefiting us today, right? They really increased our base significantly, and with that increased base, these, you know, three, three and a half percent increases have been possible. So we're fortunate in that sense. And I take every moment to, every opportunity to point out that we haven't had an operational retrograde in Westwood since I went to the beach, which is really remarkable that we've been able to do that. So if we take a look at the budget sort of broken down by major categories, so I'd point out that the top line here is salaries, and then the other four lines are all of the non-salary lines. And I think what you can see fairly quickly is that salaries in a school district, in any school district, are by far the largest budget driver, so they are nearly eighty-seven percent of our operating budget. We're a people organization, we get kids, kids working with adults in classrooms, that's what we do in schools. And notably here, our non-salaried special education costs have remained fairly stable. We have some good news this year in utilities that I will talk about, we're taking a fifty thousand dollar decrease there. And in total of the little over a million and a half dollar increase, only about ninety-five thousand dollars I hope is non-salaried. So part of the story of this budget has to do with shifting district enrollment, so I just want to put this in context for people. So we've looked at a similar slide before, our district enrollment over the last ten years has been basically stable, when you look at the number of kids in the district, it's fluctuated a little, it's gone up a little, gone down a little, but you can see here in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen where we are, we have just about the same number of students overall that we had ten years ago. So the enrollment itself is pretty stable. But what has happened is where the kids are located in the district has been shifting over time, and we've been talking about sort of this enrollment bubble that has been going through the school district for a number of years now. And the bubble is currently at the high school. So when we look here, the blue chart on the left, you can see this is ten years ago, and you can see the larger class sizes were in the younger grades, and then today you can see our larger class sizes are in the older grades. So we have two hundred and six kindergartners in the district and we have two hundred and sixty-four graduating seniors. To look at it another way, if we add up the four youngest grades in the district, K to three, it's eight hundred and thirty-three students versus the four oldest grades, which is now the high school, and that's one thousand and ten. So you can see where that enrollment bubble is. And we've talked a lot about that during the budget process because the resources, in this case, often staff, needs to kind of follow where the kids are, and that's why we see some of these shifts in staff. I also thought it'd be interesting to look back at our elementary enrollment, so I wish I had brought my little pointer here, but if you, you can kind of see that there was a ten-year period, so from about two thousand eight, two thousand nine to the present, where our elementary enrollment was declining pretty significantly, we saw about a fifteen percent decline in the elementary enrollment over that ten-year period, and we're kind of at the bottom of the curve right now, and we're hanging out there for a couple of years, but you can see that we anticipate, our projections are, that the elementary enrollment is about to go back up again. And so of course, that's something that we are thinking about, both in terms of the building project, because we're thinking about planning for future enrollments, but also that we will need to keep our eye on in terms of the operating budget too, because we probably will need to be staffing up again at some point in the elementary schools. So this year, this is kind of a summary chart, and I'll talk in more detail about each of these in a bit, but we believe that due to shifting enrollment, we are this year, or going forward next year in FY twenty, able to reduce three FTEs, so three classroom teachers at the elementary level, total of two teachers at Thurston Middle School, and then we need to add some staff at the high school to account for that increased enrollment there. And then we also have some positions that aren't about enrollment, they're about program needs, student needs. So the reason I put this chart up here is just to say that if you look at professional staffing, so faculty FTEs, in this proposed budget, the net is actually a decrease of point five FTE. So we're really just sort of moving people around, or moving FTE around. So if we take a look at what some of these specific requests are, and I'm going to start with staffing requests that are purely related to enrollment, and then we'll talk about program in a sec. So at the elementary level, as I mentioned, we're proposing a decrease of three point oh FTE, elementary teachers. I want to take a couple of minutes to explain how we arrived at that, because I think that probably looks like a big number to people, so I want to make sure we understand where that has come from. So when we're looking at elementary staffing, the first thing we do is that we get out that famous class size chart, which I will put up on the screen in a second, and we look at current class sizes with respect to the class size guideline, and sometimes in the budget process, we say, boy, we've, you know, had a couple of big classes here, it would be great if we could add another teacher to try to take care of that class size problem next year. However, the good news is, is that our class size chart right now looks really good. I would say it's probably the best it's been in ten years. And so when we did that analysis, we didn't see a need for an adjustment in FY twenty, and I'll show you the chart in a second. There are a couple of things we're keeping our eyes on, but generally, we don't think we need to make any adjustments. So after we do that, then we examine the incoming kindergarten numbers to determine the number of sections that we would need there. And it was at that point that our analysis was that we're able to reduce sections. So let me show you how we do this. First, I'm going to talk about this year, so you can sort of see the method. So basically, what we do is we take a look at information we have from the census. So we get information from the town about the number of kids who are aging in terms of kindergarten eligibility, and so kids who are going to be five and eligible for kindergarten. And we use that information to make a projection. for kindergarten. And we use that information, um, to make a projection. So, what you see here for FY '19 is the information that we had with that process at this time last year in the budget process. So, this is what we said. We said, "Here's what we think we're going to need. One section at Deerfield, three at Downey, and Hanlon, we had kind of a, an interesting number, and so we decided to do a K and a K1." Right? Then, two sections at Martha Jones, three sections at Sheehan. And so, by comparison, to see sort of how we did with that projection, here's what our October 1 enrollment is. And I, I will say that these may not be exactly what they are today. We peg things, you know, we benchmark October 1 as our enrollment number. So, what I think is pretty clear here is that, um, the reality is that our kindergarten numbers have gone up a bit, right, since, um, that projection, which isn't particularly surprising. We do see that that happens. People do move to town sometimes, just as their kids are about to start kindergarten. So, that, that is not unexpected in any way. Um, but you can see here that we knew when we looked at those budget projections last year, we looked at them, we thought about the class size guideline, and we knew we had room to absorb some kids moving in. And in fact, if you do the net, it's, um, you know, it's about twenty kids, but it's twenty kids over eleven sections. And so, the section sizes are still reasonable. And this year was particularly good because we implemented that buffer zone at University Station, so we were able to be kind of strategic about how we place kids. So, I show you this to say, this is what we do, and this is what we have been doing for as long as I can remember. This is the method. So, that brings us to what do we know about next year? And here is the census data that we have about eligible kindergarteners at each one of our schools. And so, we've said, "Well, what does that look like in terms of sections that we create?" And here's what we're projecting. So, one section at Deerfield, two at Downey, two at Hanlon, two at Martha Jones, two at Sheehan. And, you know, we've, we've talked about these numbers a lot, and you can see that, right now, the projections suggest that there's room for growth within these proposed sections. Quite a bit, actually. So, I mean, to take the most kind of outside, um, you know, premise for a second, if we said, "Well, let's, if, if we were to max out each of these in terms of the class size guideline," not our goal, right, but if you took that as the premise, um, we have room for another forty kids here. Now, that could happen.
As long as they don't all.
And they might, and they, yes, I mean, if forty kids all moved to Deerfield, that would be a problem, right? And, I mean, what happened? Seems unlikely. So, um, but, but even, you know, sort of being less dramatic than that, I mean, it could be that we have some number of kids move into, um, Hanlon, that we think, "You know what? We've reached the point where we really need to go to three sections." And so, I would just say that we think that this is the responsible way to budget at this point, given the information that we have. And, of course, we would be prepared to respond if it turns out that an additional section is required. And that could happen. These numbers probably will go up, and how they go up and where, you know, would factor into our thinking if we needed to add another section. So, that's where we are. I don't know if there are any questions about that?
Feel free to ask questions as we're going along.
Yeah. So, what does that mean? I mean, really, um, this, this gets a little confusing, how to frame it, but, so we sort of have how many sections, like outgoing versus incoming sections at each school. And so, I'm showing you how many general ed classrooms we have at each school today, and then how many we think we're going to need based on what we just discussed with the incoming kindergarteners. So, you can see that our, our reduction of three FTE is because we think we'll be down a classroom at Deerfield, Martha Jones, and Sheehan. And so, I often talk about how it's about incoming kindergarteners versus outgoing grade five, but then that confuses people because they think we're actually eliminating a fifth grade, which isn't necessarily true, right?
It's also maybe what mentioning when we did the, uh, the, uh, the state, uh, school planning, the, the demographic analysis for, you know, they looked at quite a bit of increase in our schools, you know?
Yep.
Looking out beyond these, they, you know, so, that's another demographic analysis that, you know, so they're advising us to look out for quite a bit of increase according to their demographics.
Yes, and we thought about that, and, um, we think we're going to go with the method that we've been using for a long time, for another year, and we will analyze those projections against reality and think, think about that.
But there's a more for like, a building that'll last another fifty years.
Right, yes.
Does it have to absorb?
Right, right. We're not sure how much it informs us about six months from now, so.
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
Um, for clarification, because I think that there's a paragraph on page eight in your summary pertaining to this that might be a little bit confusing, and that is, when you refer to the decrease of the 3.0 FTE classroom teachers, Deerfield, Martha Jones, and Sheehan, you're not saying that we're reducing, or are you saying that we are cutting three kindergarten classes?
Um, well, I'm saying that at each of those, well, no, so it's not quite, it's different at different schools.
Right.
Right? Different at different schools. So, for example, I'll ta, let's take Deerfield as an example.
Okay.
This year, there is one kindergarten at Deerfield.
Right.
And we project that we will need one kindergarten next year, right? So, we think next year, you know what, here, let me just do this, this will be easier. There we go. So, we think we're going to need, so we're rolling everything up, right? Next year, we think we're going to have three singleton grades at Deerfield, right? And we have, right now, we have a singleton K, a singleton grade one, two grade twos, two threes, two fours, two fives. The two fives are moving out, everybody else is moving up, and we only have one coming in in kindergarten.
Right, so there's a reduction.
Net one, yeah.
But, and the re, and I, I understand that, but I'm just wondering, when folks read this.
Yeah.
It almost sound, it sounds as though, um, just the way it's written, we, um, that the reduction has to do with the kindergarten classes. I just wanted to get clear on this a bit.
Well, and so, so there's an example where at Deerfield, we have one kindergarten, this year we'll have one kindergarten next year.
Right.
And, um, whereas it's different at Sheehan, right? So, at Sheehan, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, no, I'm, I am correct, I can look at my own chart. We have three kindergartens this year, but we are only projecting two kindergartens next year. So, at Sheehan, that's where the difference would be. It's, it differs depending on how many sections you have at what grade right now. But the decrease.
That's what the language feels like, I don't think.
Well.
I think it seems that it's a little bit confusing. Yeah. The three of our elementary schools, census data indicates that the incoming kindergarten.
Kindergarten smaller than the outgoing grade five.
Resulting in one fewer class section each overall. We anticipate one kindergarten classroom at Deerfield, two kindergarten classrooms at Martha Jones and Sheehan.
Yeah.
Sounds as though that's the result.
It does sound like.
I see what you're saying. I'd be happy to see if I can do a better job explaining that. I will say that that last sentence, we just said, "One kindergarten classroom at Deerfield, two kindergarteners at Martha Jones and Sheehan."
Is accurate.
That is accurate.
In and of itself.
Yes.
But I think the way that, that someone misinterpreted.
Yes, and this is what I was saying, so.
Why would you, that's where the reduction is coming from.
Yes, that's what I mean, that it sounds, it, people think that we're getting rid of a fifth grade. So, for instance, at Martha Jones, they have three grade fives now, and they will still have three grade fives next year.
Right.
I wouldn't want to worry about that, right? Yeah. It's just that you can see that currently Martha Jones has only two second grades, and so that will be moving up to grade three.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm creating more confusion.
No, I get it.
Okay, you get that?
No, I get it.
Yeah, we get it.
We get it.
Yep, yes.
Just so that.
Yeah, I think we have clarity on the confusion. So, I'll see if I can, if I can deal with that. Okay, so this is what the result is, right? So, this is our projected class size chart for next year. Um, and the chart looks good. I want to point out two places that we're looking at. So, we, this year, have been paying attention to Downey. Um, it's the current grade three, next year, they'll be in grade four. So, that is, right now, those are the only elementary classes that are above the school committee guideline. However, when they move from grade three to grade four, the guideline also changes, and so 23 and 23 for grade four is within the class size guideline for next year. The other area that we're looking at is Hanlon, and so if you look, grade two at Hanlon, next year, we, excuse me, have projected for 23 and 23, so those would each be one over the school committee's class size guideline. And I just want to remind you of the history of that class. So, um, back in August of 2017, so going into 2017, 2018, school year when those kids were going into kindergarten, we had some kids move in, and we ended up with forty-seven at that time, forty-seven kindergarteners at Hanlon. And so, the school committee decided that August to add a third kindergarten section. So, that class had three sections. They had a, uh, was sixteen, sixteen, and fifteen when they were in kindergarten. And one of the things that we were careful to communicate at that time was that we were adding that additional section because, one, we were able to afford it, and two, because you may recall, we had a singleton grade five of twenty-six at Hanlon. And so, we had a classroom. We were able to do it. So, we said, "We can do it now, we'll do it. We don't know if we're going to be able to keep this in place all the way up," right? It depended on the numbers coming in behind them and classroom space. So, then going into this year, we looked at our incoming kindergarten number, and what we realized was that the kindergarten number worked well to create a K1. So, that's how we addressed the class size issue for that group of now first graders this year. They went from having three sections to effectively having two and a half, right? We had two first grades and a K1. Next year, unfortunately, with the incoming kindergarten numbers and what we're going to need for grade one, and the singleton has long since left, we need to collapse those sections again. We don't really have anywhere to put them. And so, that would be 23 and 23, and we've had some discussions about reallocating an IA to that grade to provide some support at grade two. So, that is our plan.
Yeah, IA would do 50/50.
That's the plan right now, yeah. And, you know, we'll stay in touch with Mrs. Curren about how that's working and make adjustments if we need to. Yep.
Can you just give me, um, a little information on, what do we do with the kids of the, in terms of the buffer zone at University Station? Do we send them to the rest schools?
Yeah, so we have kids from University Station now at Downey, Deerfield, and Hanlon, and, um, we would be able to do that again this year. We, we made commitments about keeping siblings together and all that, so we'll have to.
So, how do you, is it dependent on the size of the class that they're going into?
Um, yeah.
So, if they were, for example, if they were going into Downey in their classroom school, they would go either to Hanlon or Deerfield?
Yeah, so assuming we didn't have a sibling name that we need to look at. I mean, that's what we do now. So, you know, we have kids currently who move in.
Right.
We take a look at what grade the kids are in, we take a look at our class size chart, we figure out where we think we have room. We've also been trying to be strategic about keeping, um, keeping grades of kids who live at University Station together.
Right.
So, when we placed them this year, we said, "Well, let's take, you know, all the second graders and put them in the same school so they'd be right in the bus together." Yeah, that's what we do.
That was my.
Yep.
That's right.
Yep.
That's what we do.
Okay. Okay, so that is, um, elementary. All right, so moving on to middle school. Um, so here's the middle school enrollment graph, and you can see we had, um, sort of a sharp increase of, uh, enrollment about ten years ago at the middle school, and then it peaked at around, just under eight hundred kids and stayed there for a number of years. And this year, the enrollment began to decline, but it didn't decline enough so that we could really, um, look at staff reductions this year and also keep our team structure and, you know, things that we value there. But next year, you can see we're projected to be at 713 students. And so, the enrollment has gone down enough now that we are able to take some incremental reductions in, in staff there. So, at the bottom of the slide here, um, whereas grade eight is going to be about 258 next year, the incoming sixth grade is only 220. So, we've thought about schedule and staffing. Um, you know, over the last several years as the enrollment increased, we added staff, and, um, now in FY '20, we're able to make these incremental staffing reductions in multiple departments. So, here's our proposal for next year. We're proposing to reduce, um, 1.0 FTE in middle school ELA. That will eliminate four sections. We've looked at what that will do to class sizes. It'll still keep the class sizes in a reasonable range. We're proposing a reduction of .2 FTE middle school science. That eliminates only one class section. Um, in thinking about what reduction we want to take there, we wanted to main, be able to maintain our co-taught science models in special education and general education, so that's something we were talking about here a lot, how we're going to support, um, students in special education in science.
How do you do there?
So, one person goes smart turn?
Well, so right now, we have, um, we currently have somebody who's .8, and we have someone who's about four, and so we're going to change the .8 to a 1.0 full-time, and we're reducing the other .2, right? And some of that has to do with scheduling, what classes people teach, but we think now the most, what makes the most sense is to make it a full-time I, I should note that actual individuals who have been impacted by this, we've had personal private conversations with them before this, so we would never, we are not an organization where anyone would get this news looking at the screen. Um, we're also pro, proposing reducing .4 FTE middle school math, so that eliminates two sections, but, you know, math is interesting at the middle school because that's the place where we do have course levels, and so we want to make sure that we can keep our ability to run both subject classes and accelerated classes, you know, it's, it's not as even a split necessarily as it is in some other subject areas when you look at a schedule. And then reduce .4 FTE middle school PE. That eliminates two class sections. One of the things that we look at here is how we schedule the ARPS rotation, but, um, we think we can take .4 FTE now. So, that's middle school.
I have a question. So, I know we've talked a bit about the middle school over the last few years. I guess this would imply that some of the challenges that we faced in the middle school isn't a resource issue. Is that fair?
Well, so these are the things that I'm proposing that are related only to enrollment and class size numbers. So, when we get into some of the other proposals, you know, we're proposing to add some things that I would say do have to do with resources, has to do with curriculum leadership, or let's see, yeah. So, you know, I would, I would say, I don't know if it's just a yes or no question, so it's a.
Well, it does beg the question of understanding, a, a question we kind of talked about in the fall, which is, you're asking us a place that's been a challenge.
Yeah.
To reduce resources.
Yeah.
And so, it implies that there's other solutions besides, and there's a .4 add for the curriculum leadership.
Yeah.
But there's other, other things that are, that can be addressed, address the challenges.
Yes, I, I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay, and so then, finally, the high school. Obviously, the high school enrollment has been going up as that sort of bubble through the middle school has arrived at the high school, and we peaked out at the high school but are going to be there for another couple of years before the enrollment starts to back down again. So, we looked at this chart back, I think in November. We were looking at class sizes at the high school. Scheduling class sizes at the high school are more complicated than some other areas of the district because the master schedule just has more variables involved, where kids make choices about what they take, what they'll level. Um, but the area that we're focusing on here in this budget cycle is English and social studies, where you can see we have, you know, a quarter to nearly a third, in the case of social studies, of our sections with twenty-five to twenty-nine students, so we'd like to bring those class sizes down. Um, and I, I just thought I'd remind you that in the FY '19 budget, we added a math teacher and a science teacher at the high school. And we have looked at, you know, what is the impact of that, like what do you get, right, um, for that increase? And you can see, it really did make an impact. When we added those classes, we were able to smooth out some of those class sizes, not entirely eliminate some of the higher classes, but very few relatively. And so, we anticipate a similar impact. Um, next year, where we're proposing that we add a full-time high school ELA teacher, that would add four class sections, adding a full-time high school social studies teacher, which actually adds five class sections. Um, so in these cases, we would lower class sizes. One of the things that's happened over the last several years at the high school is that we've expanded some of our social studies elective offerings, and, um, so we want to make sure that we can maintain those offerings. And then the other staffing request that's related to enrollment is, um, we're proposing adding a .6 FTE high school guidance counselor, and- And, you know, I think sort of at the simplest level, that has to do with reducing caseload. But as the enrollment has gone up, the caseload for the counselors has increased as well. And a point six FTE would get the counselor caseload back down to two hundred to one, which is typically what we've tried to be. So those are all the staffing requests that are due to enrollment. And then we have some other staffing requests that are related to program needs and strategic priorities. So we are proposing adding a point five FTE elementary social studies coordinator. I would just note that this is actually a recommendation that came out of the social studies curriculum review probably five years ago, something like that. And its time has come, we believe. So we, we do have a strategic objective around coherent, connected curriculum, which we've been talking about. We have elementary curriculum leadership in math, ELA, and science, so we have point five coordinators in all of those areas. This basically brings social studies, you know, sort of up to parity with the other issues. This feels particularly urgent to us right now because we have new state curriculum frameworks in social studies. And the legislature just, just passed a new state requirement for a project-based civics assessment in lieu of a traditional MCAS in social studies. So there is a big push right now around social studies, and I think we would really benefit from having some leadership in this area to help us with this process.
Question, tell us, please, yes. What other towns are doing that?
That's a good question. What are other towns doing? Do we know if they're doing it? If they're not, they should, because I think this is important, but we can find out.
Yeah, I, I know a lot of towns are trying to figure it out.
We're trying to figure out what to do right now with the new, kind of, so the new standards.
And that actually just got somewhat more of a surprise, which is funny, I mean, called a state level advisory board of students. But new standards were voted in in June, and, and then we have the assessment kind of coming online as early as next year with a heavy, heavy civics focus. And I think it, it really moves around some of the existing curriculum standards to different grade levels. As an example, the eighth grade course, which traditionally had been a US history course, is not a history course, it's a civics course. And some of the content that used to live in eighth grade is getting sort of pushed down into grade five, which will be interesting, a challenge for grade five little guys. So having some support at the elementary level for a more consistent approach at elementary is gonna really support the middle school and in turn, the high school, so we really think of it.
Yeah.
But there's like folks getting together and like online in webinars trying to sort through this stuff in groups throughout the state. Chris Hilton at the high school's been very involved in it as well. We have people who are kind of on it, and we've got a couple of proposals that really relate to this directly.
So how easy would it be to find someone that we...
I think we can do that, yeah. And, and I mean, we're particularly interested in some synergy between ELA and Social Studies too. I mean, you know, one of the things that we talk about a lot is instructional time and the sense of the elementary level, there isn't enough time and there isn't gonna be any more time, so we need to think about how we can bring some of these, some of these things together. And so that...
Yeah. No, traditional FCAs, so they will no longer be FCAs?
There are, well, no, so there is currently not an MCAS in Social Studies. So, you know, there's a long and sad history around that. So many, many years ago, when the state was rolling out MCAS, they did pilot some social studies MCAS tasks, I remember that, and didn't go well for a number of reasons. So they sort of backed away from that, and, and there's always been a sense that at some point that would come in. But now they've taken this different direction and talked about, instead of having that traditional task doing...
So there's not another test gonna be coming in?
No. No, but we are gonna need to provide a project-based civics experiment, experience for kids.
Is there sharing the role?
Can we implement that? How do you implement a project-based?
We're gonna figure that out. It's not, it's not a great... That'll be an elementary, middle, and high school. And I think the, the basic idea, and Chris will be able to jump in, is you can, there, there are a number of ways to accommodate, but the notion is kind of getting kids interested in things that are, that are real live, kind of community-based issues. Like, shouldn't we have the crosswalk over there? And what, what would be the process for doing that and really exploring and investigating?
To my knowledge, when they, when they tried to implement the MCAS, it sort of blew with their face because there wasn't like a set sort of standard, so everything was sort of generally around doing. Working degrees dealing with like world history or ancient civilizations or US like we do. And I think the standards here are trying to sort of align it and not make it so like, just to test them, but just sort of teach them like life skills. And then focusing on, we're talking about like royal registration.
Citizenship skills.
Yeah, citizenship skills, kind of like infect their system afterwards. Because most of them didn't see that until like C-juices in the year of high school and try to sort of push it down so that everybody's like, stand up.
So each town is developing their own course of this?
Yeah, I, I, it doesn't, more or less, I mean, I think the state will probably provide some, like, some rubrics and model guidelines, but I think just given their past experience of the assessment kind of going out.
And the towns working together all on ideas and what we share, it's always a good idea.
We're actually, we are involved in a consortium of towns that, with Andover, taking aid in an elementary curriculum development project where they're, and this actually predates the new standards, but they've kind of cross-walked it. So it's a really cool project that integrates literacy, social studies, and the arts and has a very sort of student-centered approach to teaching.
The state has, I would say, a good general thing to have them teach.
They have, yeah, I mean, they have done that, that's what the standards articulate.
When they read it, ELA, like before they passed the city's curriculum, I think the city's curriculum was sort of outlined in mind to sort of align with that to like, for like the product to sort of bring like the arts, social studies, and English all together.
So you're interested if towns collaborate together to hire one person that might work?
Yeah. Some of that will end up happening to tech, I'm guessing.
They're going to break the VCH.
Yeah. Right, that's right, that's right. So, so this budget request, I think, is in some ways related to the next one, which is to increase point four FTE at the middle school. And so this is a little complicated, but without getting too far into the weeds. So the idea is that we would combine this new point four FTE with an existing point four and create a point eight ELA slash social studies coordinator. And so that would mean that then at the middle school, we would have a point eight math-science coordinator and a point eight ELA social studies coordinator, which we think would be great for a number of reasons that we've talked about here before, to provide some curriculum leadership coaching for teachers, but also because it would give us this vertical leadership team. And, you know, we would then have leadership in social studies at elementary, middle school, and high school.
So the coordinator doesn't teach the students?
So in this case, the way that we've structured this, no. So the way I'm thinking of it, for example, is that at the high school, we have department heads who teach point six and then they provide leadership point four. Here, what we've done is we've taken the two point fours of the leadership and put them together into one, one person, which for a number of reasons, we think is a good way to go right now at the middle school. If you have somebody in these roles and they're not teaching, they have tremendous flexibility in terms of being able to get into classrooms and provide an instructional coaching and things like that.
Do you do evaluation about school?
That would be something that we would have to think about in the future, yeah, exactly.
So, so do they, in a sense, to dictate, I mean, not just teaching method, but also dictate the substance of what's being taught in the classroom for social studies?
Yeah, so I'll tell a little anecdote. I mean, Allison recently launched our ELA curriculum review. And when we got teachers together from all three levels and we're talking about, let's take a look at our curriculum maps, what do we have articulated, what are we all doing? You know, at the high school, they have very well-articulated curriculum maps. There really is a sense that if you're teaching honor sophomore English, we all know what we're doing here, right? And at the elementary level, we also have somebody who keeps their eye on that ball, who makes sure that we kind of are aligned across five different schools, that we know what's happening, how does fourth grade build on third grade, right, all of those things. But at the middle school, we don't really have that. We have had a model for a long time where we have full-time teachers who receive a small stipend to act in a role of coordinator. And it's really not possible to do the kind of work that we're doing in the other levels under those circumstances. I think it's a structural problem that we need to take a look at.
So it's three grades at the middle school, four grades at the high school, and then five grades at the elementary school. I, I just, so, and we're gonna do point, was it point eight at the middle school? And how, and what do we have at the high school? Well, we don't have it.
Well, we don't, I mean, you would have point four in every department.
And the elementary school coordinator, point five, that's gonna coordinate across all five schools?
Yes, that's the model we have right now for ELA math and science.
Model?
It is.
And then with a point five?
One thing we have right now going on is the point five leaders at the elementary level, the rest of their job is filled out by being specialists and doing some direct work with students and coaching with staff. And then they also have other people that, a team that they lead, you know. That's, but in each case, we started first with a leadership position, then if we need to grow up from there, we can, but it's a good place to start.
Yeah, I have to say, I think that we feel very comfortable that the model that we've developed at the elementary is really working. Like, we've seen results from that, and so we are just taking this model that's worked and we're replicating it in a new area. That's, that's really the plan. So then the last capital position that we're proposing is to add a one point oh FTE social emotional learning coordinator slash coach. This is a new position. We have just recently wrapped up our social emotional learning curriculum review. We've never done an SEL curriculum review before, right? We, we did this for the first time because we thought it is time to think about this issue in a systemic way and to think about it in terms of teaching and learning. And the work of that review, and Allison will sort of talk more in depth about this perhaps next month, we could even talk about the results of the review. It indicates a need for some significant teacher training and support in this area, as well as we think some parent and community outreach. And so we are thinking of this role as somebody who could do both of those pieces. We would wanna have, we would wanna create the job in a way that was really flexible so that the work hours would be flexible, the person would be working, I should have said here, it's pre-K to eight, we're thinking of this. So we want them to be able to be around the district, different times, doing things in the evening for the community. We also, out of the SEL review, are gonna be looking at some SEL curriculum, looking at some programs where you need somebody to steer that program selection process. And we think that this is a more cost-effective investment in in-house expertise as opposed to using outside providers. So just for example, one, one of the programs that's out there is something called Responsive Classroom. A lot of elementary schools use it. And to get their PD person...
So thirty, you can train thirty teachers for twenty thousand dollars. So, it would add up quickly.
Yeah.
To do that K-eight especially.
We think it makes more sense to go this route.
So, so I support the social emotional learning, but I'm curious as to why you're going, and maybe explain this more next month, but why you're, no, I'm going to, pre-K to eight. And I guess I have a couple of questions. One, why wouldn't you divide it up? Why do you have one person for pre-K to eight? This is an important issue, there are lots of, I mean, it can get very granular. So you're really stretching one person across a broad spectrum. Why not to, what was the thinking into one person and why not divide it up? And, and what's the difference, say, between having, or what would be the qualifications of social emotional learning coordinator? Are these psychologists, are they? So I guess I'm, I'm trying to get a better understanding of, why is it more effective to have someone across the district? And then the other question would be, was this also as a result of what principals and, and teachers were looking for? And is this, and was this what they were pushing for?
So I'll turn over to Allison a sec, but I will say that, so this was actually proposed in our last year's budget cycle, and it didn't make it this far. And we thought it was a good idea, so all five elementary principals actually huddled together and they proposed this. And we had a lot of discussion about it, but we felt like we were about to do the SEL curriculum review and we thought we might be jumping the gun to put the position in before we had done this work of the review. Having done the work of the review and sort of knowing where we've landed, we think this is a great time to go forward with this. In terms of why, so...
No, but I, so I don't disagree with going forward with something like this. I'm really just wondering if that is...
Is enough.
Is enough? Is that the most effective way to go?
I think, you know, one of the things... We, we are, we had a person in a similar role from another district who we interacted with in the course of this review. And I think right now, we're looking at one person initially as a kind of steer the timeline for getting everybody trained and getting everybody up to speed and sort of starting that process. So at this point in time, one seems like a good start. I don't think we know how much it would take to sustain coaching over time, so we'll need to answer that question when we get there. But even this position, just in the interest of being sort of thoughtful about fiscal responsibility, initially, I think we were thinking we would wait a year and just do the training work. But when we looked at the math, it made more sense to, to bring a person in-house who can really get the training off the ground. People need professional development and skill building first and foremost before we can go in and do a lot of coaching work. We're gonna get that baseline.
And what would be this person's credentials?
It's a great question.
I think it runs the game.
And folks that we've, we've seen and heard about.
There are some social work type people, there are school administrators for whom this is their, their real genuine passion, right? They love being a principal, to become kind of expert in these fields. And I also think there are some mental health clinicians type people for whom this is an area of interest as well. So we'll see who we would get. I, I think it's very important that the person has real on-the-ground school experience in terms of the, and we talked about like the scheduling, right? All the impacts of those technical things, emotional, right? And so they have to have those, yeah, for real.
I mean, ideally, we're looking also for somebody with some sort of, one of the things that the committee has converged on in terms of recommendations is they're really interested in approaches to SEL that are very infused throughout the day, not kind of a take your binder off the shelf and do a canned lesson. And that's kind of, leading that training and supporting that, that learning is a different skill set than somebody who's just working, a vendor working for a company who's just gonna come and, you know, walk you through some lessons. So we want somebody who, who's a thoughtful trainer, a professional development person, as well as that sort of...
Change leader.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, undoubtedly, there will be an element of like building this as we go and figuring out what's gonna work for us and, you know, there may be some false starts. But we, we think we're, we think we're ready for this and we think it's right in line with our, some of our strategic priorities around healthy, supportive community and, you know. You know, what I love about this is it's so much about being, building skills in kids, being preventative, trying to kind of build those competencies so that hopefully we don't later have to respond to quite as much of those.
This is great, the other thing, I'd have to be a pain in the neck, but, you know, what other communities are at the cutting edge, or have thought about this maybe a year ahead of us, which is wonderful opportunities to, to see who figures it out.
Yeah, we've actually, we've been in touch with the Newton Public Schools who got a really big grant to do some of this work. And they're, they're in year four or five of a five-year program.
Fifteen elementarys, imagine, that are newly issued and training.
They've been really helpful to us.
Cause you brought in some, some speakers to the parents in the advisory meeting, I thought from what they...
Yeah, so those are fund resources.
This person came in one time at a meeting, he said, "The first thing you gotta teach teachers is humor." The kids want somebody that's, that's a humor, and then teach them to be... The kids want somebody that's, that's a humor, and then teach them to be, you, you, what are the best jokes to tell? But that opens up the clam. I mean, this, all these, this was an unbelievable presentation. Be good for parents too to hear on this, I don't get along with your kid, but.
Humor can get you a long ways, that's for sure.
At the high school level too, or do you see it sort of like, like the other areas that we're really not needing yet?
That's a good idea. A good, a good question. Um, I think we're interested in seeing what we can do in the younger grades first. And we think that may inform what we need later in high school. But we certainly did talk about that.
Yeah, the research on, the research on secondary isn't as strong around this programming and, and I think it's more complicated. Kids are really busy, their lives are busy, the curriculum's huge and so, a lot of, you know, some things that sound like they're not S C L but have S C L components, like project-based learning. I, I think the, you know, S I P program, J term, they have some of the same, uh, components. And even, uh, programs like Basic History ourselves, or Social Studies curriculum, um, have elements of S C L embedded in it. So, um, I think it just looks really different in the classroom.
I think, um, if this makes it into the final budget, then the end of next year, it'd be nice for us to hear how it went. You know, what the first, who the first did, what they did, you know, the, you know, the how it affected.
Exactly. When, uh, the, um, adjustment counselor, no, social worker was added to the high school at the end of that year, the end of fall year, I think, she came in and did a pretty nice presentation with Sean, but I think did excellent work along those lines, so we can compare those.
Okay, so I move on here to our staffing request and operations and support staff. Um, so, three requests there. So we are proposing adding a full-time custodian. I should mention that this has been a request for several years running from the operations department and we think this is the year to do it. Um, we have some increased building use during the school year and in the summer. We have a lot of kids in the high school right now. We currently only have one-day custodian and it's just a big building with a lot of people. And so the way that we're envisioning this is that this, so most of our custodians now either work a day shift, like seven to three. No.
Oh, six to two.
Six to two, but, you know, a day shift or an evening shift. We're imagining this position would be a swing shift. So it would be somebody who would work like an afternoon at the high school and then would move either to Downey in the evening, where we think we could do some additional coverage, or this would also be the person who would be, um, sort of deployed across the district to cover when we have people who are out. And what we're finding is that, I think particularly because of the nature of the work that the students do, it's very physical. We have, you know, a lot of people who are, at, at any given moment, we tend to have somebody who's, who's out for some reason. And we actually think this will end up being cost-effective as opposed to relying on overtime. So that's one proposal. Other proposal is to add point-five F T E middle school administrative assistant. And, um, I think Allison can't believe that this is finally gonna come in once she's not there anymore. But, uh, our plan is to combine this with point-five F T E that we're gonna reallocate from the high school to create another full-time position at the middle school. Frankly, as a district team, we looked at the administrative support staffing across the district and it is clear that proportionally the middle school has been taking it on the chin. So, you know, they right now have two people who provide all the administrative support for principal, assistant principal, guidance, special ed, you name it. Reception, all of the, you know, all the, um, questions from the community. So we just don't think it's a sufficient level of support right now. We need to do something about that. And then finally, we're proposing that we increase our short-term substitute teacher line item by twenty thousand dollars. This is frankly an amount that sort of allows us to try to attack an issue. We, um, it, it is a challenge to get sufficiently substitute coverage. You may have seen, there's an article in the Boston Globe about a week ago, that this is a challenge for districts in general. That's sort of how, um, different districts are approaching it. And so we think we may need to make some adjustments in our daily sub-rate to try to be more competitive. Right now, we'd be ninety-three dollars a day. And, um, so.
It hasn't gone up very much.
Not much. So we, you know, we could think about adjusting that, but we wanna analyze it a little further because what, what we think might actually help with our, what we call our fill rate is if we adjusted up the amount. So the, the daily rate goes up after you sub for us for a certain number of days and we think we could incentivize that by raising that rate to keep people here as opposed, I mean, most substitute, not most, but many substitute teachers sign up in many districts, right? And so they're, they're accepting jobs in different places and we're gonna try to be a little more competitive.
I realize that babysitters are making a lot of money.
Yes. So, um, so we need to look at that, that issue. Um, okay, and so now, FY twenty staffing request in special education. So, um, the FY twenty budget does not request any additional staffing in special education, which seems fairly remarkable. I do feel like I need to say it's not as remarkable as it sounds. So just to remind you, the FY nineteen budget included five-point-six F T E. It was a major driver in the FY nineteen budget because we were creating an additional A V A program. So that was a big piece of FY nineteen. In addition, since the FY nineteen allocation was approved, we had some changing student needs that required the addition of several incremental positions and instructional assistance within the current appropriation. And so I talked about that at our, um, November school committee meeting and listed what those positions are. So those are ongoing needs. Those people are already here today. And we, um, we were able to add those people using turnover money from, um, savings realized in the hiring process and through retirements. And so we've included those folks in the level service calculation for next year. So the, the special education increases already happened, which is why we don't have any requests going forward. Okay, so now we move, uh, quickly to non-salary requests. And I'm gonna start with non-salary budget holders, bless you, in special education. There are sort of four categories of things to think about here. Biggest one is tuition and, so tuition and transportation, which I've put together because they are frequently related. And you can see we actually have some, you know, good news here in tuition and transportation. As you know, we've been really working hard at trying to educate students in districts whenever we can. We've been building our capacity to do that. And, um, so right now, we're showing a net decrease, um, here, uh, for FY twenty in tuition and transportation. However, we are looking to increase, um, our contracted services line by forty thousand dollars. So we do purchase some legally mandated services from vendors. So this would be kind of low-incidence things, right? Um, and I put some examples up here, teacher visually impaired, orientation mobility specialist, adaptive E E. And basically, the, um, costs of those contracts with vendors are just going up. The cost has increased. And, um, so we're trying to bring the line item closer to reality of what we're spending. Sort of a similar story is an increase in extended school year, about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So as more of our students have remained in district, their I E Ps often have requirements to provide educational services over the summer. We run a summer program for special education. And, um, so basically, this money would provide funding for some hours for teachers, I should say, nursing, I As and other related services. The other big driver here is kindergarten tuition reduction, which you know you're familiar with. So this year, we reduced the kindergarten tuition from eighteen hundred to nine hundred dollars. Our plan is that in FY twenty, we will eliminate that fee. We're one of only about forty-five districts in the Commonwealth that are charging for full-day kindergarten. Part of our core program. I think we're committed to this. The impact to the FY twenty budget is an eighty-five thousand dollar reduction to the kindergarten tuition offset. And I just wanna remind you that though the fee will be eliminated next year, we will have to continue to reduce that budget offset by eighty-five thousand dollars a year for the next two years. Right? So we kinda had a step-down plan. So I just wanna keep that out there, that that's sort of a future liability that we have to be aware of, that we internally committed to. And then we have a whole host of non-salary changes. So the net change in all non-salary counts, as I mentioned at the beginning, is about ninety-five thousand dollars. And here are just some of the things that are included. So we're taking a fifty thousand dollar reduction in utilities and this is great news. This is really savings realized with that solar panel installation. And through the solar panels, we get credits. And so we kinda get the benefit in arrears. And we've had the solar panels long enough to do a real analysis of what we think the savings is. So fifty thousand dollars is a real number. So that's exciting. It's actually the second year in a row, I think, that we've taken a decrease in utilities.
Yes, definitely. Here we worked through all the utilities and adjusted.
We're looking into that. We're looking at, like, other school districts are doing it. Some are doing it on their buildings. Then they were looking at this idea of over the parking lots.
Well, we talked about that.
We have one bad idea.
Because they, over no at train station, you know, just put it over the parking lot. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like.
Yeah. They, they have it at, um, is it Millis or Met?
We have a middle school now, I'm sure.
And actually, high school over there and it's awful. And you see the way kids leave the parking lot?
It's like an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, there'll be more dented vendors. It's unfortunate, but the way it's set, it's just, it, it looks like a, um, it looks like a parking lot.
Well, the other thing is we wouldn't be able to use parking lots under the mills, like they have Westwood there. They have.
And you lose some of your space.
Yeah. We looked at that, even the number of spots we would lose, yeah. So an increase in regular transportation of thirty grand, that's, we have a, a contract with the bus company and we know what those known increases are. Um, we're proposing an increase in project-based learning and this has to do with, um, how we're gonna fund J term and also continue our elementary coding and maker space initiatives. So we're proposing this ten thousand dollar increase and in addition, when we looked at sort of existing allocations, we're, we're moving some things from, um, from Allison's budget to support this. So it, it's actually more than ten thousand dollars that's being thrown in this direction, but we think a ten thousand dollar increase is what we need and we can sort of reallocate for the rest. And then this is kind of exciting, uh, late-breaking news. So we had a meeting with, um, Pam and, um, Mike, um, last week. And, um, so, you know, there is some money that is revenue from University Station that's kind of been like unused for the, the talent is, the selectmen are looking at it right now in terms of funding some public safety positions related to University Station. We have these increased transportation costs because we created the buffer zone. And so they have agreed to provide us fifty thousand dollars from this University Station money as an offset to our increased transportation related to University Station. So that was, um, some good news that, that we got recently. So what's missing, you know, as always, we have some unfunded requests and I haven't got the whole list here, but I've just listed some of the things that, um, were part of the discussion and we were talking about.
So the psychologist and the guidance counselor, I know there's like standard ratios. Are we, were those those ratios or we just had increased demand like everyone else in the world?
Yeah, I think, well, certainly for the psychologist staffing, we're fine in terms of the ratios. That's not a problem. I, I would say that that more has to do with, um, chronically, because our elementary school buildings are small and there's some people who are part-time psychologists. So it makes sense in terms of the ratio, but it's not great in terms of, then you don't have somebody there all the time if something comes up, right? So that was really the, correct me if I'm wrong, the conversation around that. And the guidance counselor at the middle school, that's an interesting one. I mean, you know, the ratio is different for the middle school than it is for high school. I think it is arguably a different job at the high school. It has both the counseling and the college admissions piece. But, you know. I'm looking forward to the S C L person, if that comes to bear fruit, weighing in on what pieces of that job a guidance person does now already. So I think that's a really neat conversation and we're gonna continue that. Yeah. I mean, the middle school, a couple of years ago, we added an adjustment counselor. So we decided not to go the direction of another guidance counselor and we added an adjustment counselor instead. I think we can always be looking at how we're using people. If their population's declining, we wanna look at the team structure because that may be a decision point we have to consider. Right? There may be a day where we think one counselor per team.
That's one of the, what would it cost? These recess monitors, I always see that on there. What would that cost? Because, I mean, at some point, I almost wanna say, if it's something small that has a high value, maybe you can find them. I don't know. I just see it every year and it can't be that much money.
No.
Anyway, just.
It's not.
I'd be interested in what it would cost.
I would say, I don't know that, I don't know that all the elementary principals are completely agreement about whether or not this is the direction to go in, so I'm, they're, they're all giving me the look right now.
Well, if it's out of heat, then I wouldn't go down there for any heat, I guess.
I, I think some people feel strongly.
Okay, okay.
So, um, but you know what, that, we could, we can cost that out.
It just can't cost that much money.
No, I don't think it would cost that much money. I mean, it's kind of a crazy job. So for instance, we have a lot of trouble getting cafeteria monitors because it's this many hours in the middle of the day.
It's like that line objects.
It's a good question, though.
One thing that helped us, uh, with kindergarten, which we did look at what other towns spent.
Yeah.
So, and I think we did so, we're at one time, but like just the try-valley league, you know, what are those kids playing, paying money, or play sports? And what about transportation costs? Just to begin, you know, and, and not just the league, but other comparative towns like Concord's and, uh, Weston's. It'd be good to begin to look at, are we behind the road or where do we stand?
It's a good point. We could do.
And also the J term, or how are we doing?
Oh, the money? Show me the money.
I think we're okay for this year and what we've proposed here, um, you know, our plan really is to fund it in-house. So I have one last slide here before we just talk quickly about capital. This is just some comparison data about how we compare in terms of per people spending. Yeah, Winchester is interesting. I don't know how they do it and that, that I would be fascinated to find out. So, so we are the green star, of course. And, um, the, the red dot is the state average, right? So I don't think it's gonna come as a surprise to anybody that we spend more than state average in Westwood. So who's on this chart, right? So this is thirty communities. And the way that I created this is I took the Westwood, FinComs, Comp communities. I took tech districts, because that's our cooperative, we use them a lot. And then I took high schools on the Boston Magazine Top Twenty-Five. Uh, some, some of the communities here are, you know, that are more than one of those categories and so that came out to thirty, um, plus us. And you can see where we are. And when I look at that, I have to say, I, I think we're about where we should be. I mean, we certainly are Weston, Concord, Carlisle, Dover, Sherburne, over on the right end.
Dedham's amazing.
And, yeah, Dedham's pretty high for people.
We're watching if I look at Dedham.
Yeah. But, so where we are, which is, you know, a high seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand change, it, it feels about right to me in terms of like values for our investment. I think we're in good company, but I think we're not sort of, you know, one of these districts that's spending like twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. Okay, so we're gonna talk very briefly about capital and the turnover to us, too.
So, maybe it's familiar with this chart, I've seen this for many years. We've talked a lot about capital last month and how the capital market's developed, so I'm not going to get into that tonight. But instead, I'd like to share some of the news with you, because, um, we're actually going to be increasing, having an increase to our capital base from a hundred fifty thousand dollars for next year, which is amazing. So that will actually continue on by increasing our base, getting us to a little over a million dollars for school capital projects, which we haven't seen before.
And we feel like we've turned a little bit of a corner here in terms of our capital marketing.
Yeah, heading in the right directions. Um, as you can see, it wasn't that long ago that, uh, we were at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you guys remember? And over the past five years, we've been creeping up a little bit, until now, we're at the one, uh, a little over a million dollars.
Is that some of the male stuff, sir?
Uh, you, you know?
No.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll have to move on. Yeah, this is just increase to our base, which is, which is wonderful. But as you know, the capital market has historically been underfunded, which is why we have to prioritize every year. So just to give you a perspective, this year, our request to the town for capital was one-point-seven million dollars. And so we're receiving one-point-one million dollars, which is more than we've ever received. So, but we still have to prioritize some of the projects. So, but we still have to prioritize some of the budgets that are going to happen. If you recall from last year's process, the town funded capital outside of the regular budget capital. And for us, that meant the middle school elevator. So, that was about $175,000 that we funded outside of our regular budget. This year, we proposed two projects for that. One was the high school paving, and the other was phase one of the middle school unit that we're placing. Since our base has increased to $150,000, and the combination of those two projects was about $150,000, we're gonna do those projects within our base capital. And that allows us an opportunity now to seek more funding outside of the capital budget. So, we have another opportunity to get some more funds. As you recall from last month, I put up a slide about sort of the FY '20 priorities that we're looking at, just a sample of them, and a lot of those priorities have to do with the middle school. Now, we're really gonna focus on the middle school. It just makes sense because that building's gonna be around for a long time, so we're gonna make that a district priority, make sure we get that building up and running, really, the way it should be. Now, since the town decided to move that $150 into our base, and we're moving those two projects, and that gives us the opportunity, like I said, to pursue that other, that other project. And we don't know what that project is yet, but we're assuming that it's gonna be for the middle school because that is gonna, that is our priority now. So, what that project or project looks like, we're not exactly sure, but it'll probably be something, you know, to do in HVAC system over there because that system is in need of, need of help, and so, we need to get that running. Now, for this chart itself, as you can see, we're requesting $150,000 for technology. This goes to help our one-to-one program throughout the district, so this supports that. Furniture fixtures and equipment, we're asking for $110,000. Those are just David's chairs, things that the school system needs, as well as replacements for those items. HVAC, we're looking at $192,000 for next year. Included in this figure is also fees to the middle school second-floor AC. So, we're gonna be continuing on with that project as well. We're putting $100,000 aside for roofing for next year, as we have been. And we roll that over every year, so that with this $100,000, we'll have about $500,000 available for roofing. Under repairing maintenance, $402,000, this is sort of a big part of money. That comprises about 40 or more different projects, some of which I went over last month, a lot of which are gonna be focused on the middle school. And of course, cottages, $60,000, try to keep up with our cottages. We have no vehicles proposals for next year at this point, so we're good for that. We're probably proposing can FY '21, a vehicle proposal.
So, I just wanna jump in here, thank you. So, this news about the capital allocation going up, we just found out about last Wednesday. Right as we were coming to press. So, you know, we decided to take our highest priority things. We put on this other capital article, included that. And what we would really like to do is now take some time to be thoughtful about what projects we bring forward to the town for consideration in this other capital article. So, we'd love to talk more about that in February after we think about it. But as Keith said, you know, when we think about sort of, and this, by the way, just up here, is what, so, long-range financial planning basically made a recommendation recently to the selectmen about how to be using the meals and hotel tax, which is new revenue that's coming out of University Station. And so, after a lot of discussion, the Long Range Financial Planning Committee recommended that that money be used for capital investments. And so, that's what we're talking about here. And, you know, as we've been sort of talking internally about, well, what would we wanna invest in? We know we're embarking on this elementary building project, and, you know, we're always talking about, well, what about the middle school, right? We talked about this last time. What's the risk proposition for the middle school? When you're thinking about a building, I mean, you've got HVAC, you've got boilers, you've got roofs. Those are kind of the big three. We wanna be thinking about that. And we need to keep, we need, we need to keep the middle school going for, you know, 15 years. And so, it seems like a prudent and safe proposition to say, if there is capital investment money available, let's put it towards the middle school at this point. Think about our elementary building. So, that's, I'm just sharing, that's our thinking at this point with you, and we're gonna take a look at that. And if we have an opportunity to get, you know, a significant amount of HVAC work done at the middle school, we would love to take this opportunity to, you know, to do it.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Last, last slide, this is just for the benefit of the community. So, the executive summary is gonna be emailed out to families tomorrow. All of our budget documents will be available also on the district website tomorrow, so people wanna see the nitty-gritty detail. And the February 7th school committee meeting is the budget hearing, so lots of opportunity for public comment, and welcome feedback for questions.
I just have a suggestion, as you introduce this to people. This is our report. Three, more than 3,000 students. Not a lot of people know the clue of this operation is. And 400 teachers and so many supporters, I mean, this is a big, huge operation, you know? And I, first of all, I think that's worth just introducing to the blue person looking at this whole thing. Kind of sets them back a bit that this, and the second thing, I would, I just wanna thank you for the time you spent in explaining this. I mean, it really, I think you did a wonderful job, and I understood most of it pretty thoroughly. But I think you did a great job of getting it understandable, you know, and all the intricacies of what you do.
It's good to hear, thank you.
I just have a couple of, for future consideration. I remember there's a woman who volunteered to help out the athletic department. She said, "I'm available to come in and help out." So, she started answering the phone, and she became almost a full-time volunteer secretary for a long time. And I run into people around the town who, because they have three kids at home and are raising them, they're putting on hold their computer science, their Latin expertise, their this and that. Well, there are times, and I just think if we could get creative and come up with something called "Westwood High School Volunteer Community" or something, and get somebody to run it, you know, so it's not faddity to you. But to us people who have these skills that, you know, from nine to two, they're at home, you know? The kids are going to other... I think there's a lot of talent that could come in here to help supplement, support, new ideas. I just, I like to think about it, you know?
The person you're referring to, who is wonderful. We actually do a paper now, that's a real position.
Well, she was smart, she became graduate.
She did.
There's something that I'd like to get educated myself on, only because I had requests on this lately, is when I now picked it up in the newspaper, bullying. And what I would like to know is, what do I say to people who come to me and say, "This would be at high school, middle school, and it's different in the elementary"? You know, what does, what do you say to the parent who says, "My kid comes home and is crying"? So, how do they, where do they get help? Who do they approach? How do they do it? They do the paperwork, where do they get it? Where do the older kids get help on their own? They, you know, do they even speak up or talk about it? And so, how do you get help? Who gives feedback? How do you get feedback? And it's kids, it's parents, and how do we train our kids to stand up for kids who are getting... That whole thing, I'm sure a lot of thought has been given to it. I'd just like to understand it, to explain it to people, because it's now become, you know, a bigger issue with, you know, young ladies just, you know, committing suicide because no one thought about the bullying. So, I'd like to get better educated myself, so I can explain it to people, that maybe through the media, let people know there's help out there, all the way from the kids to the parents to, what feedback do you get, and how do you know there's any progress? But I think that's, if that's a presentation at some time, it'd be very valuable for at least me, I don't know how the rest of the school community feels, but it would be, I think, invaluable for us to share and educate people. Thank you, that was a beautiful presentation.
Great.
Moving on for action items, approval of minutes from our last meeting on December 13th. Any changes or suggestions made on the bottom, anybody? They have a motion to approve?
I think there's one typo in Abby's name.
Tycho.
Yeah. Right before action items. Is that Abby, is that supposed to be Abby?
I guess it is. I see it.
Thank you. I'll make you a motion to approve it with that one typo, correct me?
I'll second.
What's the title? Thanks for that. Approve the out-of-state trip, the J-Term hiking class.
So, you have some written information about this. So, this is Summit New England Peaks, which we ran last year, although they are modifying where they're going and what they're hiking this year. And so, we're bringing it forward to you for your approval just because some of the places, I think actually all the places that they are planning are out of state. I'm not in the area.
Any discussion, any questions? I have a motion to approve this.
Someone.
Second. How many kids are in the trip this year?
Oh, I actually, I think it's 18 here, is that some stuff, right? Or is it consistent with what we did last year?
Seems to be very popular.
It's a very popular course.
The, we have, either been in business, there's no reports, any, anything anybody like to add from all the groups you're meeting with and seeing? No, I don't hear anything, okay. Do I have a motion? Thank you all, everybody, for joining us.